Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 10th, meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. Madam Clerk, would you like to call or roll?
Councilmember Bridagum.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Tua Wen.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Klaufenstein.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Can I ask Maria to lead us in the invocation and then Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Klaufenstein, to lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear gracious Lord, we thank you this holiday season for your many blessings. We thank you for the service of all of our elected officials and ask that you would guide them as they work to lead and shape the future of Garden Grove. Amen. Just place your hand with your heart and heed out your needs.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. We start with presentations. 1A, we do have one, and this is for recognition for Orange County Business Council.
Item 1A is recognition from the Orange County Business Council, awarding Garden Grove with the honorable mention at the 9th Annual Turning Red Tape into Red Carpet for the Buy in Garden Grove, big campaign. And Connor is here to give us the award.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, Mayor Protem Klaufenstein, and the Honorable City Council. My name is Connor Medina, and I am the Government Affairs Specialist for Orange County Business Council. Each year, OCBC hosts the prestigious Turning Red Tape into Red Carpet Awards to showcase the tremendous good work being done in Orange County cities, the county, water districts, and others. Too often, the phenomenal work being done by cities to go above and beyond in serving their communities goes unnoticed. On November 20, 2019, it was OCBC's honor to recognize the city of Garden Grove with the award for honorable mention in the Business Retention and Expansion category. On July 1, 2019, the city relaunched the Shop Local program Buy in Garden Grove, or BIG, which has been enhanced with a new vibrant logo and slogan, a multi-functional GIS-based webpage, rebates and promotions, and other incentives. BIG utilizes in-house talent and technology at every step. BIG partners with auto dealers, hotels, and others in Garden Grove's bustling business community to attract new customers and encourage local spending. And with that, it is Orange County Business Council's privilege to thank and recognize the city of Garden Grove's visionary leaders and exceptional staff tonight. Thank you.
One, two, and three. One more. One, two, and three. Another one. One, two, and three.
All right. This takes us straight into oral communications.
And, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, if I could just make one brief request for the council. With council's approval, staff would like to continue item 6C, which is the item on the Willowick ground lease for this evening. We'd like to reschedule that discussion for next week's city council meeting at this, on Tuesday, at 6:30. Staff are not ready to present a final document to the council members, and we want to make sure that we give you sufficient time to look over that. So we'd like to make that request before we get into the rest of the agenda.
Shall we pull that forward and continue it?
Yes, that would be our request.
And that was 6C. So I'll move.
Second.
That we continue 6C to date certain, the 17th.
December 17 at 6:30.
Motion second. Call to vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Okay. We will now open oral communications. We do have a number of cards. We're going to limit the timing to three minutes. And start with Gloria Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and city staff. I just want to remind you people, like I did last year when Acacia Parkway flooded in the rain, that something has to be done to allow rainwater, which we get very rarely but in big doses, to seep into the ground. The easiest thing to do is to cut channels. You have a concrete cutting contractor on, concrete cutting contractor on contract. That's a lot. And if they just would go along the sides of the street, anywhere where it floods, and cut half-inch wide, two, three-inch, whatever the depth is to get to the, to the ground, you could eliminate a lot of the runoff into the city sewers and the ocean, dirty water and a lot of flooding. Last year, I had to climb into the backseat of my car to get out on the right side because the rainwater was flooded out about a foot to the left of my car when I was parked on the side. That is not an easy thing for me to do. Not an easy thing for anybody over the age of 21 to do. The other thing that I want to mention is we have to, I request that you keep in your mind that any project that comes in has to make allowances for green space and sufficient parking. And just not, we're paving over the world, and it's not going to help us any. Got a lot of construction going on. We need green space. We need a place to sit and reflect and commune. And don't take that away. Thank you.
Nick Dibbs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, I'm going to speak on the Willowick issue. I did make some comments in, prior to your closed session, but that was not recorded. So I'm going to mention some important things. We have gems of open green space in Orange County and LA County, but we don't have enough of them. And the situation is, is once you build on top of this land, 100 acres, it's gone. So I want to propose that you consider reopening the process to consider alternate ideas, whether it's the land trust or something. But I want to give you an example. At Cal State Fullerton is the Fullerton Arboretum of 26 acres, beautiful place. In Anaheim Hills is Oak Canyon Nature Center, 58 acres. In Eldorado Park in Long Beach is 80 acres for the Eldorado Nature Center. In Huntington Beach, you have the Central Park, and that includes the Shipley Nature Center. In Irvine, you have the Great Park. But here in, in central Orange County, we don't have much. In Santa Ana, they have Santiago Creek Wildlife and Watershed Center, but it's stuck down into the creek, very little open space, very little green space. In Costa Mesa, you have the Orange County Fairgrounds. We need, it's more, you have to look at this as what's important for quality of life. We need to put the garden back near Garden Grove. And I know that this is in Santa Ana, but it's owned by the city. And is it more important to just develop it and use the money for something? Or is it better to maintain a significant amount of that 100 acres as open space or all of it? And it's been a golf course since 1928. Once you pave over that spot and build something on it, you can't go back. We're going to lose it. And what I'm saying to you is the money is not what's important. What's important is the quality of life. The quality of life is much more important than the money that the city is going to get. So the quality of life issue is we need more open green space for people to have a nature area and include in your plan incorporation of a nature center. So that we can have park, open park spaces for the people in Santa Ana and, and the, and the central and eastern Garden Grove. And quality of life is very important. We need the children to have places to get out, away from their cell phones and their computers, and enjoy nature. And I gave you some examples of that. We need to have, put Garden Grove on the map of having our gem, and it will be right next to Garden Grove, but the gem of Willowick, of 100 acres of open space. And if you have to sell a little bit of that land to fund the rest of it, that's fine. But put it into a trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Durfee.
Mayor, council, and community, first of all, I spent 45 days to program new site that the governor, the state legislators look at in Congress. For the community, it's for your benefit to know your children are at risk. Social Emotional Paws, P-A-W-S.org, will enlighten you that the many of our craft people who are experts are not experts yet because they haven't took time to do research and homework. So I've just taken my time and plugged it in, and I didn't hire anybody professionally. I did it myself. So there's dedication. Let me take you to, remind you what President John F. Kennedy again said. "Technology has no conscience of its own, whether it become a force for good or it depends on man, yet swayed by digital myths." We were providing our children with remarkable little guidance used to technology. Einstein said, he was famous, said, "Once you stop learning, you stop dying." So therefore, there's your proof. We are, since 60, Kennedy knew this, and we have had suicide. Let me take you to your own document, your diocese. "Seaside Garden Grove Proclamation, Mental Health Awareness, May 2019. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, whereas all experience time and difficulty, stress in life, and whereas prevention effective way to reduce burden of mental health condition, and whereas there are strong research that diet excites sleep and management and health of America, protect their health and well-being. Mental health condition is a real prevalent in our nation, and we are effective treatment in those in business with mental health condition or recovery, will, leap full of productive life. Each business, each school, each government agency, healthcare provide organization, citizens share the burden of mental health problems and response which promote wellness," except for one person in this council voted. What have you done in the last 10s you wrote this? You haven't done anything. And the Congress is concerned. Our legislature, I'm talking about the speaker, I'm talking about the Atkins, I'm talking about the legislators. What have you done to bring your community, when kids are in apps in Salt Lake who are being abducted almost by 30 predators in four days? The House resolution, the city, Utah is doing, I own a ranch up there, by the way, and they do a whole lot more in this Garden Grove city. What are you going to do when you talk about this resident, you'll vote for it, and you haven't seen any effort upon your part since you voted for this? What are you supposed to do with your words? And Einstein said, "Words and action is more than the promise." No, this is wrong of our city, and the public should know about it. Teachers and pet animals to classroom, there's federal prison for seven years. We don't teach empathy in our community. There will be violence, and it's been proven by the Sheriff's Association publications. Managing Family Online's ATT Secure Family App, ATT is now working. You can work with your industry. There it is, proof. McAdam calls for tech industry to protect children for dangerous apps. And then you have your eye safe. Guess what? You're not going to have people work for you because 45% of the individuals with that light right there, is LED, is going to destroy their eyes, 45%. SR73, Assembly and Senate voted for it, as eye blue light. Guess what? It destroys their eyes, suffocation will lead to suicide. What are you doing, Garden Grove? You're hurting your own school and your own community because you won't pick up the pieces and do something right for a change. I'm unhappy.
Thank you. Is it Lloyd Clark? I'm sorry, I can't read the first name on the card. I apologize. I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Lloyd Clark. I've lived in Garden Grove for excess of 40 years. I live on the West End, so I guess you'd call me the Westies. You know, the guy from Boston used to be the Westies, when he builds them. Anyways, to make a long story short, I'm not a complainer, but I got an issue. And my issue is that I live right across the street from West Grove Park. I see a lot. I'm retired now, so I don't have to work anymore. It's wonderful, you know, through the alarm clock and the trash can. Well, my point is, people park their cars on those streets excessively for a long time. I'm not talking cars, I'm talking about junk cars. I've seen better-looking cars in a junkyard. Some of them cars are out in front of these people's homes. I got a guy living next door to me. He's had a car out there for eight and a half years. Only times he moves is the street sweeping. Wonderful. Anyways. And these people that have trailers, and they drop them in the street. I mean, drop them. They don't, they haven't got a vehicle hooked to them. They just put them out there on the sidewalk, I mean, next to the curb. And that's their RV facilities. It's rent-free, they don't have to pay. And it only takes one person, and pretty soon you've got 10 or 12 people. And where I live, I've been there for a long time, and it's a nice neighborhood. And we all live in Garden Grove, and we want to take care of it. Like the gentleman said, the lady said before, "Let's put the garden back in Grove." That's wonderful. But what my point is, these people use our streets for parking their, whatever it is, vehicles. And I may be cutting off my nose spite my face because I got a motor home myself, and periodically I put it in front of my house. But not for no three, four, five, six, seven weeks. And I've called the police department, and there's a guy at the end of the block had a trailer stretched out 60 feet, mind you. 60 feet. I had a Class A license all my life, so I know you can't take a commercial vehicle and put it in a residential area. So I called the police department. Police department goes out there, I don't know what's said, next week, it's back again. So I mean, the law's implemented, it's there. But I don't want to, you know, I can understand the guy's going to leave it there for four, five, or six days, but not no eight and a half years. I got a kid down the street a year and a half. He's got a van in front of his house, dropped, nothing hooked to it. But the biggest item is the safety factor. A lot of times when you're driving down that street, especially around that park, kids run out in front of vehicles. It happened to me. I was driving down the street, and somebody rolled out, and a little girl ran out, and I almost hit her. I mean, it was scary. You can't see around a big vehicle. That's what my point is. And sooner or later, somebody's going to get hurt. Now, who's going to be on the lam for that? The city? Somebody? You going to get a lawyer, you going to grab a hold of this thing and run to town with it? But something's got to be done. So I suggest that I would like to see something done. Because that's all I got to say, and that rests my case. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Robert Harrison.
Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff, that holds us all together. I'm here to talk about and push the civilian parking enforcement unit. That's item 6B on your agenda later. You all know it's needed. It's a no-brainer. My neighborhood has already presented you people with the problems of parking. You had an email, and you had a hand-delivered packet, and only one of you responded. The Garden Grove Police Department is understaffed and has to prioritize their calls. Parking issues are way down. And so, and with the parking issues, there's crime and trash that's, it just rampart. Society has changed. The demographics of our community and our neighborhoods have changed. We can't turn a blind eye to this. And with the parking issues, crime. Our neighborhood is a complete example of it. I believe, in some respects, that in some neighborhoods, not only Garden Grove, but other cities, our lives and property are in jeopardy. People that are parking in your neighborhoods don't even live there. They have access 24 hours a day, come and go at nighttime. I think I mentioned a gentleman who parks his car in our cul-de-sac told me he goes out to work early. He's seen a couple of kids running by, looking in my window and out their house window. This is like 3:00 in the morning. He's leaving for work. And he's just telling me that. Parking in our neighborhoods is not the same as 20 years ago. We used to park in our driveways. There was no parking in the streets, and children played in the cul-de-sacs in the streets. And I know the time is limited. I've got a number of things here. The civilian parking unit that's going to be created and the non-emergency number, they need to get the code straight. I have a number of examples, but I'm going to hit one. I call the police because somebody in front of my home is working on his engine. The hood's up, there's trash all over, and so I call the non-emergency number. They send an officer out, they talk to him, officer leaves, and they continue working on their car. And so I call the non-emergency number back again, and they tell me that the people working on the car told them that they lived in my house. The thing is, the code says you can work on your car in your garage, not in your driveway, not in the street. But this fixing cars in the street, it's too many calls.
You got to wrap it up pretty quick. Sorry, your timer went off, so you got to wrap it up pretty quick.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Three minutes. The thing is, you need to vote for this. And I'll be back again whenever it's going to happen, and I'm going to add my other things.
Thanks for coming up. Josh Kaz.
What's up, y'all? So this is about the Willowick Development Project. I'm just here to say, everybody should have the right to common lands, and of course, this is the only large parcel of common land in the area. So if you develop it, of course, you're taking that away from the community. Also, of course, there are a lot of, there's a lot of talk about backroom deals that are being made with McQuinney for this development project. And it's not only insulting to make these deals in the backroom, but it's insulting that McQuinney develops luxury apartments for high-to-middle-income folks. And I don't believe that that is appropriate to do so in a community of particularly low-income individuals. So I do appreciate you moving the meeting or the decision to next week because it gives me an opportunity to bribe you and then get some deals going. So trying to find out who's going to laugh at that. Okay, so a couple of you, I know who to target, all right? Anyways, please, please just consider that we live in an insane world where insane things are always happening, and our stress levels are at an all-time high, and we freak out a lot, and we need a place to sit and calm down. For me, that's the arboretum. But for others, they're not close enough to the arboretum to travel there, and they have this land to sit under a tree and calm down. So with that, I say thank you, and I'll see you next week.
Okay, Byron Lopez followed by Sandra De Anda. Byron Lopez. Oh. Here he comes.
My name is Byron Lopez. I live in the Santa Anita neighborhood, just right by the Westminster border between Santa Ana and Garden Grove. I live quite literally next to the Willowick site. I see the fence that protects us from the golf balls going over the line all the time. And if you go ahead with this development of over 100 acres of public land into, and you decide to lease it to McQuinney, who, as previously mentioned, focused on luxury apartments and hotels, you will be raising the property value, and by doing that, you will raise the rents of everyone who lives there. About 60% of the people who live around the Willowick site, both in Garden Grove and Santa Ana, are renters. My family's one of those. If you do this, we will have nowhere to go. We already are dealing with rising rents as it is. One of my parents is semi-retired, the other one's about to retire very soon. Even if we put all our money together, we still have, we pay about 40% of our income just in our mortgage for our mobile home, along with the land rents. And the land rents are, like I would say, three-fourths of what we have to pay just for housing. So if you do this, you are going to push people out, you are going to put, you're going to worsen the homelessness crisis in Orange County by thousands. Because when people become homeless, we don't have anywhere else to go. It's not like we have the money to buy a house in Inland Empire, or even to move and like pay for the first and last month's rent. Even that is a difficulty for us. So if you do this, we're just going to stay in our cars in Orange County. We will blend in with the rest of the people that society wants to forget about. Please don't forget about us. Don't forget about the people who are already homeless and need a place to live. Half of all homeless people do have jobs. We need affordable housing. We need green space. We need parks. We need community centers. We need gardens to have some actual decent food because we can't afford it otherwise. So I know that McQuinney is selling you, is offering you a very vague offer and a very enticing offer monetarily. It's a, it looks like a big pile of cash that's super easy to sell right now, but it's only one, it's only really one time. And you're going to be sending thousands of people, you know, possibly to their deaths. You don't, like, when things go bad economically, suicide rates go up, families fall apart. A lot of us, a lot of people who live in my mobile home park are seniors, and they're on limited income. They can't, they only have so much money, and that mobile home park that they got decades ago is, are the only option for them. It's frankly, it's the only option for my family now. So I just really want to implore you to understand the lives you are going to ruin and devastate because of this decision. And you don't want to pack us into a corner because, guess what? We have nothing to lose. We will protest in front of your houses. We will make your lives miserable if we have to. You do not want to pack us into a corner. We have nothing left to lose. Like, things are already, things can only get, can barely get worse for us anymore. And I understand McQuinney, especially for some of you who have received money from McQuinney during the last election cycle and probably in the future one. We understand that you are basically bought for them, bought by them. So I want you to understand just how bad this is, and to instead vote for a public land trust, for community gardens, for affordable housing that's for the people who live there and for the working class, not the rich. Thank you.
Sandra De Anda followed by Pam Donaldson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Sandra, and I'm a Rise Up Willowick member. Let me just talk about the history of displacement in Orange County. So first of all, the indigenous population was displaced, and then it was the African-American population, and then it was the Chinese-American population, and now it's the Latinx and Vietnamese population. We are the last wave of a major minority group that are about to be displaced. Residents in Orange County are one check away from becoming homeless. We are one major private project away from being displaced. This node in southwest California has brought many of us from far and wide, many without our choosing. Immigrants and refugees have found economic promise here in Orange County. I am appalled and disappointed that you all have not been transparent with the process of leasing the Willowick Golf Course. You all are choosing to give McQuinney properties the chance to lease this property for 45 years without having them do a thorough assessment of what their project entails and the effects for the community. It is obvious that you hold the residents that live by the Willowick Golf Course and its allies to a different standard. We have surveyed the residents in Willowick. We have created our own data that emphasizes the needs of our community. What has McQuinney done besides develop luxury housing here and given Mayor Steve Jones some campaign funds through the Gray Wolf Lodge? Our lives are not transactional. If we have to come here every week, we will, because I believe that housing justice is reproductive justice. Housing justice is immigration justice, and we're here to stay.
Pam Donaldson followed by, is it Cynthia Agüera?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. I'm just on another note right here. I want to talk about the STRs again. I haven't come for a while, and I have been taking pictures and sending them out, and they're not stopping, they are growing. We've got two more on West Street. So, I mean, they're taking houses away. You know, that's not, that somebody can be buying them. They're growing. I don't know what else to say. We've been coming for almost a year now, and nothing's happening. If you guys are going to find them $1,000, and then what happens is that they're paying their fine, so they get to do it again. So they get fined. Give me the money. I'm turning them in. Give me the money. I'll keep them going. You know, but you guys are just finding them, and that's all. And so they are growing. There's three more on West Street. So I just, you know, that's my quality of life, and I'm in the middle of all this business going on. They come and they go. They're just like a hotel and motel. And I know a lot of people in Garden Grove aren't affected unless you live in Stephanie's area, because that's where they're at, or John's area. That's where they're at. But give me my quality of life back. I don't want to be next door to somebody that's coming and going with their hotel, with their, with their laggages and their baggage, and going to Disneyland and coming back. That's a hotel. That's not the kind of life that I want. So just give me my quality of life back. Thank you.
Followed by Michelle Zuniga.
Hi, my name's Cynthia Agüera, and I'm a resident of Santana, and I'm also a member of the Rise Up Willowick Coalition, which I hope you have come to know now because we have tried to reach out to you multiple times, either through email, through comments, to try to get you to reach out to the residents that are members and that are part of the area that you're currently trying to develop the Willowick site. You know, I was trying to find the most convincing argument or the most convincing data I could throw at you to try to convince you that, you know, the deal that you're trying to rush or not to finish by the end of this year is irresponsible and it's reckless to the community that you're impacting. I was trying to find this, but the truth is, I shouldn't have to do any of that. The truth is, it's apparent, it's clear, and we're still having to be here. All these folks still had to come out here today to have to talk to you, to let you know that that's the case. I appreciate the fact, I guess, that you, you know, postponed, you know, this discussion on approving this resolution to have McQuinney be the master developer for the Willowick site. But I would actually rather that you didn't postpone it, that you actually just dissolved it, that we didn't have to have that discussion. Because you did zero community outreach to the community to try to see whether this is something that is actually beneficial to them. You did, there's no project proposal. Like, the community doesn't know what this proposal is. All we know is it's some sort of mixed-use development. That's it. That's all we know. What does that mean to us? I mean, you're trying to, you're contemplating a resolution where we literally have no idea what's going to go on there. And again, you haven't reached out to the community. You haven't reached out to anyone. You haven't responded to any of us who have directly approached you, tried to get you to respond to us with any of this information. I don't know if you've seen it. This might be helpful to you because we actually did do community outreach to 325 residents that answered our survey to let you know what it is actually that the community needs in that area. And it's not, you know, hotels. It's not high-end development, luxury apartments, high-end retail, mixed-use developments. It was open space. It was open space. That was primarily what people said. Like 60-something percent of folks said they need open space. And then folks said 54% or so said affordable housing and then community centers. Nowhere in there were there luxury apartments. Nowhere in there were there stadiums or mixed-use developments that people can't afford to go to. None of that was in there. I don't know if it's okay if I submit this so that it's, you know, a little bit of a community outreach that should have been done, but just a little bit of a guiding marker. But we've been trying, the community has been coming here. This is probably the fourth time that I come here and that I know other people have come here to try to talk to you. And so you shouldn't postpone the conversation that you were gonna have for today because you shouldn't have that conversation at all. You shouldn't do that. You're trying to rush this deal because there is a legal case open for this land and you don't want it to go into the next year because there's a new law that's gonna go into effect that will complicate your ability to let go of the land in the way that it seems that you want to let it go. So, yeah, we just, we want a transparent process where the community is included. We don't just get three minutes to talk to you, but we actually are able to have a discussion with you about what folks actually need in that area. In Santana, in Garden Grove, in all of central Orange County because we have zero open space. I shouldn't have to have a program where kids get bused to other parks to try to go on campuses and stuff like that. That's great, but the thing is they should have a park right next to them that they can access whenever they need. So again, we submitted a letter with multiple, you know, with residents that are wanting to make this a more transparent process, with organizations that are also supporting this. We've made ourselves available. Our contact information is still there, so if you can please reach out to us, we would greatly appreciate that. But most importantly, I think that it is our right that you listen to us in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Zuniga. Followed by Jonathan Bakkermark.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Michelle and I'm a member of the Rise Up Willowick Coalition. I'm here this evening to urge that you do not hand over Willowick to developer McWinnie this evening. Willowick is one of the last remaining open green spaces in this area, in an area dealing with overcrowding issues, traffic, rent increases, and a lack of adequate green spaces needed for residents to de-stress from the issues at home and the city. Your decision to move forward with leasing the land for a 55-year period at a haste pace does not take into consideration the repercussions that come from the types of developments you all have in mind. I urge you all to take more time to listen to nearby residents and hear their worries and needs. Your decision to move forward with the leasing of Willowick, I believe, also raises issues of procedural justice in the planning process as you all have limited the project to only your developers' ideas for this space, have not facilitated the planning process in an unbiased manner, have not been transparent about plans, have lacked legitimate representation of the community in the planning process, and have made steps towards violating the Surplus Lands Act. Such actions jeopardize trust with the city and stifle community involvement as city officials do what they want and put profit over people. And should Willowick be handed over to a developer to plan hotels, luxury housing, et cetera, taking away park space and affordable housing in an area that needs it would impose serious implications for equity and distributional justice where surrounding low income and communities of color would be, could be disproportionately impacted by the developments planned for this site. I urge you all to keep Willowick for the community and not for developers. Thank you.
Jonathan followed by Marla Sanchez.
All right. Hello, hello. Good evening. So this is also for the audience as well as you guys. So what's going on? People behind me. Despite many attempts to contact city staff and city council members, the City of Garden Grove has selected a developer in a closed-door process without any public input or transparency. The city is now racing to rush through a deal without even knowing what the final form of development will look like in order to circumvent the state law California Surplus Land Act and its new amendments in AB 1486. So you might have heard a lot of this before, but I just want to reiterate on how important it is. So this statement regards the Willowick Golf Course and proposed development thereupon. We assert that Garden Grove is obligated to follow the Surplus Land Act, or SLA as it stands. Garden Grove is not acting in accordance with California law. By issuing a request for proposals without prioritizing the publicly owned land for open space or affordable housing, Garden Grove is not operating within the California Surplus Land Act. As such, a lawsuit has been started as of October 7th against Garden Grove for failing to follow the SLA. I'm sure you guys have heard of that and are knowing what's going on with that. Despite this lawsuit, the City of Garden Grove is moving forward to dispose of land before January 2020. And that's coming up faster than you think. We demand that the city follows the Surplus Land Act and honor the community's vision for Willowick. Without community oversight, we risk devastating effects for residents of the Willowick area like skyrocketing rents, gentrification, and even less open space for residents. Friends of Harbors and Beaches and Parks published the Willowick Golf Course as one of the sites on their green vision map. This means that Willowick is identified as a parcel that is a clear opportunity for communities in central Orange County to gain access to 102 acres of public green space. From a legal and ethical standpoint, the City of Garden Grove must comply with the Surplus Land Act and prioritize public use for the land. Thank you very much.
Marla Sanchez followed by Penelope Lopez.
Hi, good evening. I'm here with the Rise Up Willowick Coalition also, and I just want to say that I, everything that everybody has said before me is absolutely true. There are a lot of us here. There's a lot of people in the overflow room, but there's literally hundreds more at home who couldn't be here, whose lives and families are on the line. My life, my family is on the line. Okay? Rent is ridiculous. There's no options. My family bought this home, as I said, a long time ago and because of health issues. I had somebody comment on an article that I was interviewed for about this, saying that my choices as a single mom are why I'm in poverty. And that is such ridiculousness and I hope that none of you think that. There are a lot of reasons why we are in the financial straits that we are, my family and many others, and it has nothing to do with what kind of people we are. An invisible line between our cities doesn't mean that we're not your problem because we live in Santa Ana. I have family in Santa Ana and in Garden Grove. Like I said before, we deserve to have access to open space. Okay? I'm sick tonight. I have an ear infection. I had to bring my daughters here. We have not had time to go have dinner yet, so we're probably gonna leave as soon as the comments are done. I'm tired of coming here and I'm tired of fighting on both sides. We go to Santa Ana City Council too. It's not my job, it's not any of our jobs to come here and tell you how this is affecting us. It's your job to come to us and find out what these projects are gonna do in our neighborhoods and in our homes. We're exhausted. Please don't make us do double work. We have jobs. We have families. We have responsibilities. I have an 80-something-year-old grandmother at home alone right now because we're all here telling you this. Please. This is not just a for-profit thing, okay? These are people's lives. We're tired. We deserve open space. We deserve parks. We deserve affordable housing. My kids deserve a good education. We all deserve to do what makes us feel empowered and be a benefit to your community and to ours. And with these kinds of projects, you're just pushing us more and more out. You're not including us in what could make Orange County, Garden Grove, Santa Ana wonderful and great. This is very, very serious. Please do the right thing.
Penelope followed by Keith Costello.
Hi, my name is Penelope and I'm the organizing director of CHISP, one of the many organizations here in solidarity where Rise Up Willowick. The people speaking before you are residents, they're community members who will be directly affected by your decisions. It is a shame that our International Human Rights Day, today, we have to come here yet again to ask for the bare minimum, for you, for your transparency and honesty. You have yet turned your backs on the people that you're supposed to represent by going behind closed doors and making decisions, making negotiations to dispose of public land. Listen to your community. Listen to their experiences. Honor their input. Garden Grove and Santana do not need more hotels. They do not need more commercialization or sites that will only displace and murder entire communities and ecosystems. We are in need of open space, affordable housing, and most importantly, we need you to hear our voice and represent us, not developers. Or be responsible for the displacement and reduce life chances of working class and low-income Latinx and Vietnamese communities.
Keith followed by Karen Garcia after.
I had some prepared statements and then you changed it up on me, so I guess I'm gonna kinda wing it. Last week, or the last time I was here, I didn't prepare anything, so I prepared things this time and then you changed it, so gonna go with this. Today, you were supposed to decide whether one of the last remaining open green spaces in our working-class neighborhood would be handed over to a for-profit developer for decades. You're leasing away our present and our future. We want our communities to be invested in, not depleted and exploited for the profiteering of a private developer from Denver. Your blatant disregard for the desires of the community show us your disdain for working-class constituents. As we have repeated time and time again, we would like a community land trust with affordable housing and a community garden and a beautiful park, not a resort or a playground for your friends and the elites. I yield the rest of my time.
Karen followed by, is it Marla Sanchez? But I can't read the first name. It's not Marla. Sorry.
Hello, my name is Karen. I'm an organizer here in Santana. Before I start, I just want to say everything that I'm telling you all, you will not understand because you don't live in our communities in Santana here. We've been fighting here since day one. I have lived here all my life and we've been dealing with gentrification and high rent control and you guys are going to be giving Willowick up to developers that are going to have high increasing apartment for high rent control. We have been fighting for that since day one and I'm sick and tired of us being displaced. The streetcar that's being next to Willowick is going to affect us all. We are, we, it's crazy because today is Human Rights Day, but it's Human Rights Day every day for us. We are literally striving, we just want to prosper here in our community and you guys are making it worse for us. I'm here advocating for the youth and I speak for the youth here and I'm sick and tired of seeing this all happen to cycle and I want it to stop. And I want you all to have some subtype of heart at least to understand that everybody here behind me lives here in this community and I live here in the community. Okay? And I know y'all are probably comfortable wherever you are living in, but we're not comfortable. Being comfortable is foreign to us, okay? And Willowick deserves a housing that is affordable and our values are rooted in our communities. We have people of color here, youth, people from LGBTQ plus and immigrant and undocumented folks that are still trying to survive here. And you're not listening to what we need and what we're fighting for. And that's all I gotta say. So done.
My name is Zella and I've been living here my whole life and you guys have been making our homes be, costing a lot of money and it's been very hard for my family to pay for our house and to live at it. And we would like to ask and we need to ask for you guys to make our house be cheap because you guys have been making all of the houses too expensive for everybody here. And that's all I have to say.
Followed by Karina Servin.
Good evening. My name is Karen Rodriguez. I am a resident of Santa Ana and I'm a proud member of the Rise Up Willowick Coalition. We are here once again to defend our, as a public, against the threat of irresponsible decisions of this council. We are neither surprised or in shock, but we are outraged and disgusted. The cities have not done right to the public by keeping them out of the development process on purpose for the intent to sell off our vital resource. This council has chosen profits at the expense of people's well-being. The city's actions to try to approve a resolution to lease off of our, off our public lands in closed session with no public input is infuriating. Now the city wants to postpone this hearing not for, not for the public's benefit, not to meet with community residents, but instead for your self-interest. The city is now rushing through a deal without even knowing or disclosing what the final form of development will look like. This prevents us from having the opportunity to discuss this proposal in a public hearing. This is our public land. This goes beyond political favors, political moves, and political loyalty. People's future and well-being are at stake and I don't know what's so funny. We're here, we're talking to you all. This is not a laughing matter. You should pay attention to us.
Karina followed by Jesse Lopez.
Hi, good evening. My name is Karina. I'm a Santa Ana resident. That's the same city you guys are, with the property that you guys are gonna be trying to sell off. And I'm here to tell you guys, the council here, that, I'm here to tell you guys that you should be ashamed of yourselves for doing this. You were elected to represent the people of the community, not to make profit, not to make money, not, not for your own interest. You were elected to represent the people of the community. So we're all here, you know what we all want here. We've made it very clear and you should also be ashamed that you're not doing your jobs. Rise Up Willowick, like they took it upon themselves to interview people to see what they want. That's something you guys should have done, which you didn't do. And I know it's probably difficult for you guys to see us as actual people with, with like goals and dreams and stuff, but that's what we are. I know you just see profit, you just see money, but you should vote in favor of what the people want. That's why you're in office. That's why you get paid. That's what you're supposed to do, so that's all I have to say.
Jesse Lopez followed by Isella.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jesse Lopez and I am here as a Rise Up Willowick member. It wasn't that long ago that my peers and I asked this council to prioritize the well-being and humanity of our communities. And what better day for you all to recognize Human Rights Day than tonight? Tonight, we are here once again to ask this council to not prioritize developer money and influence over the lives of the Latinx and Vietnamese communities. And tonight, you once again blindside us. I am here because I believe in economic justice. I believe in housing for all. I believe in environmental justice. I believe in a democratic process. Our communities should have the right to decide what type of development wants to buy their way into their neighborhoods. To even consider leasing the land to McWinnie for 55 years, 55 years, most of you won't even, well, without having presented an environmental impact report, without a traffic impact assessment, without having informed the immediate communities of the area is insulting and you will be directly creating a broader class and racial divide in Santa Ana and Garden Grove. Our coalition has doorknocked, talked to residents, and put together a report that clearly states the needs of our community. The lack of responsibility from the city to assess the impact of the project is reckless and deeply disturbing because parks and green spaces are not just nice to look at. They influence health and well-being. A large body of research shows that green space tempers climate extremes and mitigates the urban heat island effect. And access to improve, and access to it improves physical and mental health by providing more spaces to walk, relax, and play. It's important for everyone in the city to have access to those benefits. Time and time again, we have asked for a community-driven process, but it is clear that these basic values are not welcome in this house.
Isella followed by Dustin Nguyen. What's that? Isella's not here, okay. Dustin Nguyen, followed by Sean Drexler.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, council members, and Garden Grove. I'm Dustin Nguyen, an Episcopalian and resident of Fountain Valley, home to Mile Square Park. In my faith tradition, this is the season of Advent, in which we celebrate the coming of Christ. Jesus says in the 25th chapter of Matthew's Gospel that whatever we do for the least among us, we do for Him. So long as the working poor come to us for help, it is God who comes to look at us in the face, it is God who walks this earth, which is why I add my prophetic voice to the voices of my Rise Up Willowwick comrades, fighting for liberation of the economically oppressed. The selling of the 102 acres of Willowick land to a commercial developer threatens to displace our low-income neighbors in the era, area, who are simply trying to exist amidst high cost of living and low wages. Further at stake are the ties that bind us as a human family. We're raised to think that we exist separately from each other, you are you and I am I, when in fact, we are through others. It is our, is in our interacting with our fellow neighbors on this blue space rock that we shape who we are, guide ourselves to maturity, and fill our lives with meaning. But the hypnotic forces of power, indulgence, and selfishness would rather we be indifferent to each other's suffering. Could it be more ironic that on the agenda directly after this council would have considered, would have considered selling Willowick and the dignity of the working poor along with it, this council will vote on a proclamation declaring today, December 10th, as Human Rights Day in Garden Grove? The preamble to the United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights states that recognizing the dignity and inalienable rights of all persons is the foundation of freedom, justice, and peace in the world. The willingness to write off human costs as inconsequential paves the way for the next human rights atrocity. I watched the video of 16-year-old Carlos Vasquez, a Guatemalan migrant who died from the flu through the negligent indifference of Border Patrol, and who was lifeless for four hours before his body was found. The atrocities are happening now. It's a vicious cycle, but we can break this cycle together. Let's put the well-being of people before profit by using surplus land for open space and affordable housing. Let's fight for those in vulnerable positions because we just might be in their positions one day. And who will be left to fight for us? After all, even the one called the Messiah, the Son of God, wasn't safe. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Sean Drexler, followed by Rinker Morris.
Hello, my name is Sean Drexler, I'm a member of the Rise Up Willowwick Coalition. Each time I come here, I'm more amazed at the council's lack of transparency regarding the plans for the Willowick property. I can't believe, but I really should have seen it coming, that the city council has selected a private developer, McWinni, during a closed-door session on the 26th, and with no report back to the public of this selection. McWinni is a private developer known for gentrification and displacing residents. It also happens to be a major campaign contributor to Mayor Jones and to several of the other city council members. McWinni has given thousands of dollars to Mayor Jones over the past decade, so what we're seeing here is a self-serving cycle where developers pay for access and council members grant that access in exchange for these campaign contributions, and both parties benefit while communities suffer. A majority of residents Rise Up Willowick surveyed in the area are opposed to mixed-use development, and mixed-use development is exactly what you want to retitle the Willowick property as, not open space and affordable housing, as the majority of residents surveyed spoke in favor of. You are therefore acting in direct defiance of their will and failing to honor their vision for the space. Worse, you're rushing through this process to beat the new laws taking effect in January. You know this land is surplus. There's a lawsuit on account of the council pretending Willowick isn't covered by the Surplus Land Act. Nevertheless, you're racing to get this deal made before hearings are underway, and because you're doing it so fast, you can't even know what the impact of the development will be. There's not been an environmental impact report, there has not even been a traffic assessment. To approve a project while skipping these steps is completely irresponsible, especially for a property of this size. How can the city make such a decision without knowing how it will impact residents, and how can the city make this decision without reaching out to residents for feedback? City Council and Mayor, this is not one to dial it in on. You need to do your due diligence. Don't lease the Willowick property to McWinni, don't even make a resolution to approve it. Dissolve that whole negotiation. Slow it down, do it right, make yourself a legacy, a legacy that says you honored residents' vision by securing 102 acres of public land for their use to live and play in. Don't make it a legacy of following campaign contributions, anyone can do that, selling out to gentrifying developers and displacing families. How about making it a legacy that recognizes and honors human rights?
De Rinker Morris, thank you, followed by Gil Sanchez, sorry, can't read the first name.
Thank you, Honorable Counselors, my name's Donovan Rinker Morris, I'm a staff attorney with the Public Law Center here in my own capacity tonight. I understand that my law firm has represented a fair number of residents of Garden Grove, often facing eviction, facing discrimination, or other issues that are preventing them from obtaining, retaining, or maintaining a lifestyle in your city. We do this throughout Orange County, and we've been doing this for decades, I'm the latest in the number of attorneys at the Housing and Homelessness Prevention Department, Tonight, you're, you were considering a motion to appoint a negotiator and pursue a lease on the Willowick Golf Course property. I was astonished by the motion because there is a temporary restraining order, I believe, that is in place, that is enjoining the city of Garden Grove from actually consummating the sale of the property. The wording of that temporary restraining order was, pending hearing on the order to show cause, you, your agents, employees, and city council are restrained and enjoined from consummating disposition, sale, lease, transfer, and/or conveyance of the Willowick property to any person or entity unless and until the court determines you, your agents, employees, and city councils have fully complied with the requirements of the Surplus Land Act. Ladies and gentlemen, the Surplus Land Act was passed in 1968, this is not a new rule in California. Now, I had to swear an oath to become an attorney in the state of California, to uphold the Constitution and the laws of California. This particular act, though, has been honored in the breach quite often, and a lot of cities have tried and attempted to bypass it through a number of different tricks, which is why it's been amended again and again and yet again, and still cities run afoul of it, including San Jose, on the same day that the temporary restraining order was issued enjoining you from consummating the sale. San Jose was also found to have breached the Surplus Land Act by trying to claim as a charter city it was exempt from the mandates that the act implies. This is an old rule, and the act is an easy one to comply with. All one needs to do is, before selling surplus land, or leasing, or otherwise transferring surplus land, to raise that land for affordable housing or for a public park, and I am flabbergasted that this hasn't occurred, and hope that the city council will offer a clear explanation and will attempt to properly deal with this land before the December 17th hearing determines whether preliminary injunction is going to be issued to compel you to comply with California state law. Thank you, City Council.
Gil Sanchez followed by Kaylee Levitt.
Good evening, council members, and happy holidays. I'm also a member of the Willowick Rising. I'd just like to tell you what kind of people live in that neighborhood, because I grew up there from 52 to 1976. Hard-working people, people that wanna have parks for their children, people who have served their country. My father was a Korean War vet. When I was growing up, on all three sides of my house, Nam vets, Vietnam vets, one of them died from Agent Orange. And if I got called, I was waiting for, I thought I would be called up next, luckily I had a high number, so I kinda dodged that bullet, but I was willing to go if I had to. Anyway, these are the kind of people that live in poor, working-class neighborhoods. And I heard the word "legacy" bandied about here, and that's your opportunity, I'd like to see you guys leave a legacy of a park, green space, because this is one of the last big remaining green spaces in Orange County. And also, I heard, put the garden back in Garden Grove, that sounded pretty nice to me. So for the children, for future generations, and I'm sure there are Middle East war vets right now from that neighborhood that are serving for their sake and their children's sake, I'd like to see you do the right thing and create a park for that neighborhood and for all of our, central Orange County, because we need it really bad. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate your thoughts on this. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Kaylee followed by Zella Sanchez Beard.
Hello, everyone, thank you for your time, I'm Kaylee and I'm here to speak on the Willowick Project. So not only am I concerned about the seeming avoidance of the law that's purposefully happening, I'm just here to join in the concerted effort by local residents to enforce something that is trying to create housing and environmental justice in an economy that does not share the same priority. We shouldn't have to come and make this effort, but I'm not surprised. Spaces deemed commercially unproductive are always under threat, since what they produce cannot be measured or exploited, or even easily identified, despite the fact that anyone in the neighborhood can tell you what an immense value the land provides by not being developed as a commercial space. By leasing the land to this developer, you are losing the opportunity to provide that value, that the community is telling you is there. And by rushing to do so before the enhancements to the Surplus Land Act, which go into effect in January, it shows that that's not a priority that you share. It's not our job to be here, as people have said, it's actually your job to enforce this Surplus Land Act, and you're elected, you're elected to enforce this law, and you should see this as an opportunity to give back power where it should already be, so, thank you.
Zella Sanchez Beard followed by Roberto Herrera.
Hi, good evening. I haven't heard anybody touch on this yet tonight, but how many of you were a part of the decision to delay the sale of the land until next year? I do believe I read somewhere that that decision was made, and that now by choosing to sell the land before, behind closed doors, you're actually going back on your word? None of you participated in making that decision? No? How many of you believe yourselves to be principled leaders of this community? None of you? Okay. Well, your, your actions are definitely proving that right now, because you know there's a law in place, you've heard from a lawyer, you've heard from the community, and you're choosing to ignore it, and you're also choosing to ignore the will of the community in order to not only skirt this law, but continue to receive the funds, because so many people have said you're elected by the people, but I would actually venture to say that you're not being elected by the people. Seems like the mayor is actually being elected by the dollars of this developer that you're choosing to be representing instead of the community members. And I'd just like to say, shame on you if you continue to do this.
Hold on, hold on one second. So Roberto, it's gonna be followed by Joel Robinson, I just wanna clarify for point of order per Mayor Protem, it's not a two-way conversation, it's, you guys are just addressing us, so we're not supposed to answer any questions or talk back at this time, so thank you.
Great. Hello, everyone, my name is Roberto, I'm with Resilience Orange County, a nonprofit organization here in Santana. I actually grew up here and, as part of the GGUSD alumni, and I live in Santana, right next to the Willowick Park. We're back, right, and we're gonna continuously come back to fight for the land that is there at the Willowick public lands and public hands. It's a shame that a lot of folks have been putting shame on you, and that is true, but it's also shame on the developers, who continuously come back into this area to develop, to develop and displace folks down the Harbor Corridor. It may seem beautiful, those buildings, right, but when I see, it's just a little bit of ugliness, because I know that what is going on behind those closed doors and those negotiations that are going down aren't benefiting the local community, right? So it is only benefiting your campaign, and I really plead with you to listen to the Willowick community, the Rise Up Willowick Coalition and their demand. You heard it from the lawyer, right, the law is the law, and you all are only trying to circumvent that, so please keep the land public, keep the land open for the community there, thank you.
Joel Robinson followed by Anthony LaMester.
Hello, I'm Joel Robinson, I'm actually a resident of the city of Orange, and our community has been trying to preserve some property along Santiago Creek as open space, because it's on our general plan as open space, and I see the, your job here is super easy, actually. Where we are, in Orange, it's private land that's changed owners, owners a bunch of times, and has had various project, projects titled, project names to it, but you already own the land, which is pretty amazing, and it's zoned as open space, as far as I know, so, and your community is already pretty clear as to what they want, again, super easy, so you have an opportunity to look like heroes, doing what your community wants and making it open space. I wish it was that easy in the city of Orange. We had to have a referendum, get a bunch of petition signatures, we have two lawsuits filed, I believe, now, and it's been a 20-year process in trying to preserve this open space that isn't publicly owned. So I hope you consider the concerns of your community and, and, I mean, you'll look great in the paper if you do it, so, thank you.
Anthony followed by Manny Escamia.
Good evening, this is the first time you've seen me. So I was born and raised in Santa Ana, this has been my hometown for a long time, I left for a little while, came back, and honestly, I'm just really baffled and ashamed of what the city and the neighboring areas have become. I remember when I was a little kid, my favorite part of the, of the whole area has been the many cultures and the different types of people, all my friends. When I was a kid, I was the only white person in like, a whole Hispanic neighborhood, and that was, I loved everybody, I hung out with, they were all my best friends, and it's just, it's disgusting to see that you guys are just throwing these people away, throwing this beautiful culture away, because you want money, you want some campaign donations. How about you do what the Rise Up Willowick people did? Go talk to your community members, go actually speak to them, and ask them what they want, because I can promise you, if this goes through, I will make it a personal mission of mine, and I'm sure a lot of other people will, to make sure none of you are ever elected ever again. That's all.
Manny Escamia.
All right, Mayor and Council, thank you all. I wish I would have had more time to prepare, but I think like many of the residents and folks that are here in the audience, we didn't really have that much time, because it was a surprise item. There wasn't really a report out that came out the last time we were here. So as a background, I am trained as an urban planner, and I know the importance of development and the long-term health of a city. But when you have the opportunity for green space in one of the most highly urbanized spaces and park-deprived spaces in the entire United States, it's a time to make a stance. I know it's not going to be the easy road, but there are funding opportunities available if that's what this council decides to do in order to fund open space, parks, nature preserves, ways to re-green the Santa Ana River, to really have vision for Willowick, and not to just basically give it away on a three-page term sheet. Really, like, what do we really know is going to go in there? We know that this particular developer has five developments in Southern California. All of them are hotels. We have no examples of what their mixed-use products would be in California. All we know is that when they do something and construct something in the city of Garden Grove, they say it's built in Anaheim. You know, go to their website. It doesn't say that they built any hotels in Garden Grove. It doesn't say anything like that. It says, "Southern California." So I'm just up here and, you know, growing up in the central part of the city in Santa Ana, you know how hard it is to get to a park. And the neighborhood that I grew up at had a park taken away by the city. So this is something that's deeply personal to me, and I know that you don't have Land Use Authority over the area, but just so you know, I think the people that are here are going to be very highly organized, will make sure to do everything that they can in order to save their homes, to have an open space opportunity for their children, and to make sure that it's a city and a community that remains intact. So whatever decision you decide to do today, we're not going anywhere. Thank you.
That concludes oral communications. Do we want to keep going, or do we want to take a break? Let's take a quick break.
Next we go on to item 3A, selection of Mayor Pro Tem under reorganization. Motion.
Yes. No, hold on. We haven't. Can, may I? First of all, I just want to say that it's been a pleasure to hold the title of Mayor Pro Tem for 2019 and that it's always an honor to serve the City of Garden Grove. And with that, I'd like to nominate Councilmember O'Neill for Mayor Pro Tem 2020.
Wow. Second. Wow, thank you. Thank you.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Congratulations.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I'm, thank you to my colleagues for having entrusted me in that and I strongly look forward to doing that position for the next year and getting out and representing as Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We will now recess to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Bridigan.
Here.
Member O'Neill.
Here.
Member Tu Hau Wynn.
Here.
Member Klaffenstein.
Here.
Member Kim Wynn.
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie.
Yeah.
And Chair Jones.
Here. We have, we already did oral communications simultaneously. I do not have any additional cards. It moves us on to reorganization, selection of chair and vice chair. Currently Mia is chair and Councilmember Patrick Fatboya is vice chair.
Mayor and colleagues, this successor agency is unnecessary because we need to continue it for many years to come with very little things to consider in the, you know, going forward, but mostly is for continuation. And for that, I strongly think that we, I would like to nominate Mayor Jones to continue to serve as a chair if he would agree to do so. I think continuation is a key here for the successor agency and there's just no new item, you know, to be considered. And I think continuation is, is the strength for Steve to be on that, on this agency.
Omar, could we take these both together? Is that, does that matter?
It's really up to the council if you want to take both together. It's almost like running for president.
Can I just move that we keep them both the same?
Yeah, I was gonna say, under that, under that concept then maybe.
I'll second George's motion.
Okay, so first by George and second by John. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Consent items, just 3A, receive and file the minutes from.
I move.
Second. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to the Industrial Development Authority.
All right. Welcome. So this is the annual meeting for the Industrial Development Authority. If the clerk could please call roll.
Member Bridigan.
Here.
Member Bowie.
Yeah.
Member Jones.
Here.
Member Klaffenstein.
Here.
Member Tu Hau Wynn.
Here.
Vice Chair Kim Wynn.
Here.
And Chair O'Neill.
Here. Thank you. We've already done oral communications simultaneously. At this point, we're going to reorganize the Industrial Development Authority. I'm happy to serve as chair or unless anyone else would like to do that.
I'll move, we keep them the same, vice chair and chair.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, second. Please call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you very much. We'll continue this. We have two consent items. This is to receive and file the minutes and for the annual report and also the file of the minutes for the meeting held on December 11, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second, call for the vote.
Your choice is second.
Any matters from members on this?
Hold on.
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn until the next regular meeting or for the next specially called meeting. Thank you, back to council.
Well, I should go to sanitary district.
Sanitary, okay. Thank you. Yes, so Garden Grove. Thank you. So at this point, we'll go to the sanitary district. If the clerk could please call roll.
Okay. Member Bowie.
Yeah.
Member Jones.
Here.
Member Klaffenstein.
Here.
Member Kim Wynn.
Here.
Member Tu Hau Wynn.
Here.
Vice President Bridigan.
Here.
And President O'Neill.
Here, thank you. We've already done oral communications again. We do have one consent item. This is a joint item with the city council for the Garden Grove disposal. We're gonna have a staff report on this or go back to council or how do you want to handle that?
On the consent agenda, so it's only if you'd like to pull it.
Okay, so I have a motion on the consent. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Move. Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Sorry. Matters, any matters? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn back to council.
Okay, we'll reconvene city council, move on to consent items. Recommended that items 4A through 4I be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Do I have a motion for the balance?
I'll move.
Call to vote.
Gotta catch up with y'all. Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. All consent items have been approved. We'll move on to public hearings, 5A.
Item 5A is adoption of a resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program and adoption of a resolution approving a billboard removal and relocation agreement. Mr. Guero is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroyd. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. The request before you tonight is to transmit a planning commission recommendation for the adoption of a resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program along with the adoption of a resolution approving a billboard relocation and removal agreement. On November 7th of this year, the planning commission approved a site plan for the removal and relocation of two billboard structures along with four faces and convert them into one 50-foot tall, two-sided electronic billboard located along Garden Grove Boulevard, Garden Grove Freeway corridor at 12862 Garden Grove Boulevard. The planning commission also recommended that the city council adopt a mitigated negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring reporting program. The city code requires site plan applicant as a condition of approval to enter into a billboard relocation and removal agreement with the city when proposing to relocate existing billboards in the city. The agreement requires the permanent removal of two billboard faces for each new electronic face erected or installed, along with any and all required mitigation measures, conditions of approval, applicable city code provisions, as well as provides for payment of applicable fees and costs. The agreement before you between the city and Outfront Media LLC provides for a 30-year term comprised of an initial term of 15 years with an extension for an additional 15-year term. The proposed mitigation fees to be paid by Outfront Media to the city will assist in mitigating the aesthetics, cultural, and economic and other impacts of the proposed electronic billboard. The mitigation fees will not exceed a total amount of $2,718,769.82 paid annually over a period of 30 years. Included is a one-time processing fee of $10,000 to defray the cost of negotiating and preparing the document. A one-time fee in the amount of $125,000 to be paid 90 days following the development approvals. In the initial term, in years 1 through 15, the mitigation fee will total $1,155,841. In the extension term, in years 16 through 30, the mitigation fee will total $1,562,929. And the city will have access to every ninth billboard flip for community messaging purposes. With that, it is recommended that city council conduct a public hearing, adopt a resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, adopt a resolution approving the billboard removal and relocation agreement with Outfront Media LLC, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city council. The applicant, the environmental consultant are both here to answer any questions. With that, that concludes staff's report and staff is available for any questions.
Any questions of staff at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Please.
So I know on, with any of these billboards, we tend to put a provision in there for the city to access time on that billboard for community events and local nonprofits have events and that kind of thing. So if I had a local nonprofit list saying we were having an event, how would one actually get access to that where we could contact the city and say, hey, we've got an event at the Christ Cathedral or somewhere and we'd like to have it up on the billboards? How would one actually, what's that process look like?
It is not open for nonprofits. It's only for city events.
Okay, specific to cities.
Yes.
Okay.
It's city announcements for, normally city events.
Can you clarify what does it mean?
The Tep Parade is a city event, right?
No.
The Strawberry Festival?
No, those are both private events.
So what city events are we talking about? Winter in the Grove only, basically, or?
Yes.
Maybe the buy-in Garden Grove program that we're promoting.
Seems very limited.
Can I have just some clarification? So there are billboards, digital billboards in the city that do promote, so for instance, vector control. I know we've had some things appear on some of the billboards off the 22, so just so that we can clarify the difference in which ones can allow different things.
Yeah, so we do limit it to city events or governmental events because otherwise we would have to open it to everyone equally. You know, then the equal protection clause kicks in. So again, it's a public medium and so we have, we otherwise are opening up a public forum and then we would have to have rules for, you know, application, who gets in, who gets, who's not in. We don't have any of those rules, so it's better to just limit it to city-specific or other governmental agencies that the city partners with.
So it's extremely limited in scope as far as what, what can be put on there, basically.
So the quick answer is yes, and it's by necessity.
Roger that, thank you.
Quick question, Omar. So just hypothetically, we have an event that the city sponsor, does that count or partnership with?
If the city sponsors it, then it is a city event.
Okay.
Could we, could we then use it to promote city efforts such as census outreach?
Yes. And that... Yes, and that also qualifies as a governmental event.
What does it mean by when we say a city sponsored event? For example, we have a lot of very good community events such as the Boy Scout push cart.
Berry Festival.
The strawberry festival, and even Ted Parade. Ted Parade, even though it's a private nonprofit program, but it is something that really benefit the resident of Garden Grove. It's really worthwhile for us to be able to inform the public about those kind of events. So can you clarify for us what does it mean? So what can we do in order to make those good programs for the resident to use this? But this is not just for the event itself, but it's for the benefit of the public, like strawberry festival example.
Yeah, and it has to do with whether it's really a city event that is being promoted in conjunction with a nonprofit.
So in a nutshell, if the city is sponsoring it or co-sponsoring it.
Correct.
Then it would be okay to go on the bulletin board.
Yes.
However, if the city, and that would take a formal resolution of the council for sponsorship.
Yes.
Sponsor, does the sponsorship mean the city have to sponsor financially or the city council can just have a resolution to sponsor it in terms of supporting it? Can you clarify that for us?
Yeah, ultimately, the city council determines, you know, the level of sponsorship, including whether it would qualify to be, you know, to be advertised in one of these slots.
Yeah, I think this is a bit important and we may agenda to discuss about this as a future date because I, for example, the strawberry festival, the scout push cart, the Ted Parade, all of these are very good events that can benefit the community at large. But yet, when I talk to a lot of my friends about the strawberry festival, they have no clue. So I think if the council would support that and sponsor that, even in the sense that we want to just a general support without having to spend public fund, I think that will be very important so that we can get the message out to the publics.
Well, the reason I even asked the question because, you know, I drive down the 22 or whatnot and I see those signs all the time and I'm aware because of my time on the planning commission and other, that we have that available as a city, but you never see any city stuff on those signs. It's, you know, so that was what, very rarely, though, very rarely. And so that's why, I mean, I don't know, that's why I brought it up to begin with, but I think you answered my question.
The important is for the city to be the one making the determination, you know, which event is going to be advertised. If you open it up for applications and any group to ask for it, then you are going to run into issues with constitutional limitations.
Sure, sure. And I think you kind of summed it up with the sponsorship question. I think that if the city's sponsoring it, then that makes sense.
Part of the sponsorship could be that we get to advertise your event in one of these slots.
Sure. But I do think Councilman Bowie's idea of maybe discussing this in the future might be appropriate.
This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing. Anybody, I don't have any cards, but anybody wishing to speak on this particular item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Council members, colleagues.
I would like to motion to approve it before, so I'd like to make a comment. Seeing that this is in my district, I just want to say I'm in support. I know some of the billboards that this is going to replace sometimes are not upkept and don't look as nice and with weather constraints, things fall apart, so I'm happy to have this when I'm driving down on the 22 and you see the nicer digital ones. I'm glad to be seeing that come up in District 6, so I would like to motion to approve this project.
Colleagues, I generally support this billboard replacement. I think it is in the location where it does not cause impact to the residents surrounding it, and this will be an ideal example of how we would support, you know, digital billboard and especially when we're taking down, you know, a very old one that could be applied elsewhere. However, I also want to caution that when we replace a billboard, we need to take into consideration that the replacement location should be of minimum impact to residents' area. One have to put themselves in that, in that suit in order to understand the impact to the residents. I myself live between two big billboards, which is about four, five, six hundred feet from my house. So it is very important when we consider a location to relocate the billboard that would be, you know, very minimum impact to the surrounding residents. In this particular case, it have very, very little, if not zero, impact to the resident because surrounding it is, on this side is the industrial zones, and then the other side is a large freeway with block was limited part of the plight to the resident on the other side of the freeway. So I would be in support of this, of this item 5A.
Did we have a motion?
We already did.
Any other comments or else call the vote? Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, moves on to items for consideration. We have several. 6A.
Item 6A is to authorize the issuance of a purchase order to National Auto Fleet Group for seven new Public Works Department utility body trucks, and Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, city council has asked to issue a purchase order to National Auto Fleet Group to buy seven new Public Works trucks. The new trucks are replacing existing trucks that were scheduled for replacement this fiscal year. Staff was notified by our vendor that the price of these trucks would escalate on January 1st of 2020, so staff decided to go ahead and take advantage of the existing prices at this time, which is why you're seeing such a large amount of trucks at one time. The trucks listed in, are listed in your staff report and they range in price from $45,000 to almost $74,000 for a grand total of purchase order will be $361,322.24. These trucks are going to be used by a variety of Public Works divisions with the majority of the trucks going to the water division. The specific divisions are also listed in your staff report. It should be noted that the price of these vehicles also includes the installation of a Pacific Sales utility body. The utility bodies range in price from $16,000 to $34,000 at the top end, and that's for the larger F-450 truck. The utility bodies are specifically made to meet the demands of each division and for the specific use of the truck. Staff utilize Sourcewell contracts, which manages a national-wide competitive bid process for common municipal purchases. Doing so, staff is compliant with all California purchasing code requirements, and that's, well, that is why we use a Sourcewell contract. And to that end, the National Auto Fleet Group is deemed to be the lowest responsible bidder. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
I'd like to make a comment. Just, you know, I just want to commend staff on their very thorough reporting on this item. Very good job.
Thank you.
Motion second, call the vote.
You mean the other item was not thoroughly done?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
6B.
Item 6B is appropriation of funding and adoption of a resolution approving two new community service officer positions and one senior program specialist position to support a parking enforcement program, and Chief DeRay is here to give the report.
And Clerk Palmeroy, before I ask Chief DeRay to talk about this, I just want to, ahead of time, following the discussion the council had about this item, we quickly convened several of our departments together, including Chief DeRay's department, the Public Works Department, finance was involved, HR was involved because we have positions in play here, too. So compliments to all four of those departments for getting together, getting this report together so quickly, doing the financial analysis of it and trying to bring it to you expeditiously. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief DeRay.
Mr. Mayor and council members, we are seeking city council approval to appropriate funds for salary, benefits, and equipment for two full-time community service officer positions, which will be assigned to the Garden Grove Police Department's Neighborhood Traffic Unit, and additionally, one full-time senior program specialist assigned to Public Works. For years, the department had a full-time community service officer assigned to the Neighborhood Traffic Unit that handled vehicle abatement and other traffic-related duties. The position was funded at the time by OCTA, but that funding stream ended in 2013, and no one has been assigned these duties due to budget limitations. The result is that the burden of parking enforcement and vehicle abatement has been handled by sworn police officers, which diverts them from their primary law enforcement duties. Public Works is responsible for managing the parking citation contesting program and is a primary contact for issues related to parking citations. With the addition of two community service officers handling parking enforcement, it is anticipated the volume of traffic citations will significantly increase. The increase would exceed the current Public Works staffing capabilities as the current parking citation coordinator is a part-time employee who is limited to working 1,000 hours per fiscal year. Illegal parking, the RV ordinance, and abandoned vehicles have been identified by the community and business owners as a quality of life issue, and the police department agrees. In one year, the department received over 3,000 calls for service regarding abandoned or illegally parked vehicles, representing 4% of our total calls for service. The police department has determined the community would best serve, would be best served by reestablishing the vehicle abatement program supported by two community service officers. These positions have emphasis on enforcing parking regulations, handling vehicle abatement, and assisting the Neighborhood Traffic Unit with various community and city events held throughout the year. Public Works oversees the administration of citation processing and will need an additional position for their increased volume of work. To that end, the Public Works requests the addition of one full-time senior program specialist position that would be responsible for the administration of citation processing. The financial impact. Anticipated approximate one-time and ongoing general funds cost for the enhanced program are as follows. Two fully outfitted vehicles for our community service officers at one-time cost of $93,632. Annual fleet cost for two vehicles for a total of $48,000, which is an ongoing cost. Uniforms and equipment for two community service officers for a one-time cost of $24,000. Salary and benefits for two community service officers at each step for a total of $218,688, which is an ongoing cost. The rental of two e-citation devices for a total of $4,800, which is an ongoing cost, and salary and benefits for one senior program specialist at each step for a total of $148,838, which is an ongoing cost. We have a total approximate one-time cost of $117,632, a total approximate ongoing cost of $420,326, for a total approximate first-year cost of $537,958. It is recommended that the city council appropriate funds from the general fund for one-time and ongoing costs for two full-time community service officers and purchase their required uniforms and equipment, appropriate funds from general fund for the purchase and annual maintenance costs of two fully outfitted vehicles to be used by the community service officers who will be assigned to the police department's Neighborhood Traffic Unit, and appropriate funds from the general fund for one full-time senior program specialist position assigned to Public Works, and adopt a resolution adding two new community service officer positions and one new senior program specialist position. This is the end of the staff report, and Lieutenant Gilde and I are available for any questions.
Burge, you brought this forward, so I'll give you the floor if you want to go first or if you want to...
Sure. You know, I brought this forward for many reasons. One, the vast majority of complaints I get from people are regarding parking, 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 and the lack of, and it's not, it's not due any fault of the police department, but quite frankly, the parking is like the lowest priority for them. You know, they've got bigger fish to fry and they're busy. So, you know, the city had a parking unit up until, I believe, 1981 or '82, and it was disbanded, and we haven't had any real parking enforcement since. Other cities, matter of fact, all other cities in Orange County have parking enforcement. We're the only one who doesn't, and the community is aware of this because the other cities park in our communities because they can get away with it, and then that creates even more of a problem for our community. I spoke with Councilwoman Nguyen, and we kind of battered back and forth to come up with an idea on this, and then I went and talked to the chief about it. He was in support of it. As he said, it is a quality of life issue for our community. So, you know, I think we all have parking issues in our respective districts, and it would be nice to actually have a unit that can be responsive to that. So that's why I brought it forward. I'm in full support, and hopefully we can get this through tonight.
I assume you're going to motion, and I'll second, but I'd like to make another comment and just thank you for your leadership on this and for including me. As you know, I've had multitude of residents from District 6 come and talk about this issue. There was one gentleman here today to talk about it again. We're...
Two.
Two. We have, as you know, we don't have metered parking, we don't have pay-for parking, we are free public parking, and I think that sometimes there's a struggle with abuse of that a little bit, and I do have my qualms because I know there's a lot of individuals, I think it was stated earlier, that garages are no longer used for parking, which makes it even more stress on the street parking. But I'm more so concerned about the safety in areas up and down Haster by Lamson where the new turning light has been put in place. It's very difficult to see when you're turning inside, in and out of those residential areas, and so for me, it's a big safety concern. We've had pedestrian deaths in that area, so I think that having a dedicated, dedicated employees for this is a great move and hopefully will alleviate some of those concerns that our residents have, and this is an issue that is not just limited to District 6, but it's throughout the whole city, and so I'm glad that we've put some attention to this issue.
One quick follow-up, and I neglected to mention, yeah, we did have two people here, and what was, I was glad today because we had a guy from my district, and then we had a guy from Kim's district here, you know, in support of this, so it kind of shows, you know, the whole city is looking for this kind of stuff, so. And today alone, I got three texts in, well, one email, two texts from people with parking issues. So that being said, this does not eliminate the police from being able to write a parking ticket. They still can. I did have one citizen who was upset because he thought we were going to not allow the police officers to still write parking tickets, and no, they can. They can still write parking tickets, but this takes a little bit off of their plate so they're not responding to these calls and wasting their time and whatnot.
Obviously, I don't think there's a single area of this city that isn't affected by parking issues in one way or another, obviously in District 5, being that I'm the closest to the resort district and the convention center. It's always on a priority of the residents, so I know certain streets there off of West and Orange Wood that are right there staring smack dab at the face of the convention center. And when these large conventions, we have NAM coming up in January, they're facing a lot of issues with parking, not only people parking on their street, but Uber drop-offs and so forth. So for an example, and to kind of relate this to something happening in my district, hopefully these officers or this program would be able to go into District 5 when these big conventions are going on and help mitigate some of those issues with parking and with just traffic and congestion and so forth. So I think it's a, I think it's a win.
win.
You know, parking is always a major issue for everyone in every district. I have heard least from district, from my own district. But before we get into districting, between 2014 and 2016, I got so many phone calls from people everywhere in Garden Grove. There are some very major hotspots, one of which is Dale between, it is, which is now in your district, Council Presingham. Dale between Garden Grove Boulevard and Lamson is a major problem for parking. The other is falling, falling leaves circle just west of Hester, which is in District Six. The resident there crying and crying, crying. I took them to meet with traffic engineering, with city staff for a few, few days, and nothing got resolved. We just hit the block wall. And then on Mr. Robert Harrison, I met with him three, four times. Bring him to the city council, meet with the city manager prior to Scott Times. Nothing got, got resolved. People was very frustrated. I think this is a very good step, but I don't think this will solve, this will improve a little bit, but it will not touch, this would only touch the tip of the iceberg. I believe we need to do more than this, but I'm very glad that George and Kim took the leadership and moved this a few feet forward. I'm certainly think this is long overdue, and I'm glad that at least we will be able to address issues such as RV people park for a long times, fixing car on, on, on public streets. But it will not touch the other issue where, take the falling leaf, for example. There is a big apartment complex, and people do not park in their garage, but they took into that small dead-end streets. And so the resident on that falling leaf street can never be able to find a parking when they get home. Close by is Chapman, which they cannot park. And so they sometimes have to park blocks away. Same thing with the Dale Lamson area. People sometimes have told me they have to park three block or four block away to walk home in the dark. So I think, I think we need to come up with, with other way. And we attempt to do that by doing some permit parking or meter parkings, but it did not get anywhere. I hope, you know, when we go into the council retreat, we will take a look at this and try to see if we can address them.
I think this is a great program. I totally support it. Although, when we do a new program, we want to see if how effective it's going to be. And so I want to request chief to maybe every, maybe six months, the first six months after that, to reassess, to see how successful that the program and the community officer be, how many ticket we issued for the past six months, what the hotspot, did we solve the problem of parking? We would like to hear the feedback from the constituent as well. So not just implement the program and let it go, but need to have assessment, six months, the first six months and the first year, to see how, how effective and what we can do to program, make the program better. So that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very much in support of this. I think next to SDRs, this parking issue has been the biggest issue, I know, in the whole city and District Two for sure. Like Councilman Brodigan said, I get so much people coming in from the Anaheim or unincorporated part of Anaheim that come in and park in our neighborhoods because they know they can get away with it. So no offense to the, the Police Department's been doing a great job, and they'll be glad to get rid of me calling the Police Department on, on parking issues. So the biggest issue I'd like to see, and I'm excited about, is, you know, the, the RVs, the truck, tractor trailers, the work trucks, the things that shouldn't be there. They shouldn't be there, and they, and they're not legal to be there, but we haven't had the resources to deal with it. Now we have the resources to deal with it. I'm excited for our quality of life going up because of this. So I'm all for it.
Sorry, one thing, wanted to add. For the phone number that the, the public can call to complain about the parking, do we have any access line to that, or we have to, everybody have to call the non-emergency number?
No, not the emergency number.
Non-emergency, yeah.
So we just had that conversation, and for the time being, it's going to take us a little bit, if approved by council tonight. It's going to take us a little bit just to get this program going. In regards to that, we had a discussion. Once we get this program, I mean, as of right now, they can call the non-emergency number. However, if this is passed, what we are going to work on is some type of hotline that we can share with the community, that we can put out either on social media, or we can just get it out there to the community, that they can call that, and then these employees would check that number and focus on some of the problem-solving efforts for that. In regards to your comment about bringing the statistical data, absolutely. I think for us, one of the big things is, is to get in there and do some of the problem-solving with the community. So what's important for us is to get that feedback from them. I'm not going to lie to everyone. I mean, we're not going to solve every problem. We're going to do our best to jump in there and really try to take down some of the major issues, but we will do that throughout the city. So...
I have one question for the chief as well. What, it, once approved, how long do you estimate it will take to hire and train and get these folks out on the streets?
So it just depends. So we do have an ongoing list for community service officers right now. However, based on this program, if approved, we can offer that to current community service officers within our department. So if that happens, where it's an internal fill with those positions, I could have that up and running probably within weeks. Maybe, you know, I don't want to give a, I like to get things done, but I don't know if I can get it done that fast. But obviously, there's going to be issues, you know, getting vehicles, and that takes time. But we could work our way around that and have it operational once they are selected.
And, and their uniforms will designate them somehow that they're the parking officers. I know we use the term "community service officers," but for the public's edification, that's referring to these parking enforcement officers that we're discussing.
Yes. So their, their uniforms are somewhat different. They wear the light blue shirts.
But they'll have parking or some kind of markings that associate them with the parking instead of being an explorer, you know, the one that comes to the Neighborhood Watch meetings, or, you know, they'll have some kind of differentiating thing on their uniform, I presume.
Yeah. So they'll, they'll have something. I mean, we don't know what that's going to be yet. Typically, they all wear, whether they're report writers, but are community service officers. They do a lot of different tasks within the police department. So we don't really have any insignia. Now, in regards to that, the vehicles that would be approved would not look just like police vehicles. They would have traffic enforcement, you know, parking enforcement, something like that on the side of the vehicle. So they would, the community would be able to tell these are the vehicles to do the parking enforcement.
And just to follow up on that point, we will keep council members up to speed on when we are ready, you know, how that program's coming along, when we're ready to kick it off. In fact, probably would make some sense for us to work with the PD Public Information Officer and our social media, or our own Public Information Officer in our office, to get out some information that this parking enforcement team is now up and running, and to try and get the word out about it, along with some information about reminding people what number to call, where they can, you know, how they can expect to impact and work with this team. One of the things that the chief and I have talked about is, and several, a couple council members have used the word "hotspot areas." We all know where there's some hotspot areas, and so now we, with this team, will be able to kind of work on particularly some of those hotspot areas that are concerned to everybody, and maybe begin to change some of the behavior, where people have said people are abusing the city's goodwill by parking on their streets in the wrong sort of way. So I think there's going to be some good strategic actions they can take.
Chief, one suggestion, when you ready to get the phone workings, could you please have it in three languages, English, Vietnamese, and Spanish, and get to that language selection as soon as, as, you know, you greet the callers? Because a lot of the time, a lot of seniors who are very poor English-speaking, they call the non-emergency number, and they get frightened, and they hang up because it's, they receive a long English message, and they're confused, and they just hang up, and they don't, don't stay on. They didn't realize that after that long English message, then there will be a Spanish and then the Vietnamese. If we can have a system that can get them to the language that they familiar with, that will be easier for them.
Yeah, we will do our best. Normally, everything we do is in, in four different languages, so we really try to touch all of our community base. I will work with members in my department to see if there's some way that we can make it very easy...
Right.
Just to push buttons for a certain language.
One, the phone answer, just say, English, one, Spanish, two, Chinese, three, Vietnamese, four. And then they put it, and then they will listen to that, to the main message.
We will do our best on that, yes.
Do you have a comment? If not, I'll make a motion.
We have, yeah, a motion over here.
All right. I move, I move approval.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Right. Now, we're going to get the complaints about people getting tickets. Just, just so you know, you know.
Okay.
Don't repay the bill.
6C has been continued. That takes us on two matters. We do have one listed item, a consideration of an adoption of a proclamation declaring December 10th, 2018 as Human Rights Day in Garden Grove. It was requested by Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
I'll spare us, and I only want to read the last two whereas's, because I think those are the most pertinent. I would like to request that we proclaim December 10th, 2019 as Human Rights Day in Garden Grove, and that we add it to our consent calendar of items that will be continued to be brought forward on consent annually. And that the last two whereas's of this proclamation read as follows: Whereas the city of Garden Grove reaffirms its faith in fundamental human rights and the dignity and worth of every human person, and the global right to safe migration for all immigrants and refugees, and the equal rights of men and women, and has determined to promote social progress and better standards of human life. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city of Garden Grove declares December 10th, 2019 to be Human Rights Day in the city of Garden Grove, and encourages all citizens to continue a commitment to upholding freedom, democracy, and human rights in our community and around the globe.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, matters. Going around the horn, any matters?
Just a couple. Merry Christmas, everybody. We're not going to have another, well, I guess we will have a meeting on the 17th, but that's, I don't think that's going to be broadcast. Is that's a special meeting? It will be broadcast? Okay, well, I can wear my sanitizer again then, right? All right, cool. Get two uses out of it. So with that being said, we've got Christmas coming up. Be kind to each other. One, one thing, we had kind of briefly discussed prior about the SRTs and, and some targeted enforcement, and possibly a task force or something, and I haven't really heard anything on that yet. We, we had a couple members today talking about it being an ongoing problem. I'd kind of like to hear what the plan is. You know, I haven't heard anything yet. I knew that we were talking about possibly focusing and maybe doing an Operation Hammer type of thing or kind of something, but then it never heard anything more.
Just so that I, that's coming back after the first of the year. That was an extensive report I asked staff to bring back after the first of the year to talk comprehensively about SDRs and so enforcement.
That's why I haven't heard anything, okay.
That's why you haven't heard anything.
Well, just keeping staff on task.
You said, you said SRTs, and I was thinking Special Resources team, something with the Police Department.
Oh, I'm sorry. Short-term SDRs.
You meant SDRs.
See, I'm really having a, I'm batting a thousand here tonight. So, all right. Well, I just, I just don't want that to fall off the, the target, and I want to make sure we're, we're...
It wouldn't possibly.
Maybe we, now, and we can even include the new parking unit in that operation, right? So anyway, that's all.
Thank you. So I just want to wish everybody a happy holidays, Merry Christmas. For me, it's safety, you know, those smoke alarms, be careful with your Christmas lighting, wiring. When you're out and about, please lock your cars. Don't leave your valuables visible. There's a lot of that going on, and even in our own neighborhoods, is people checking door handles at the middle of the night and, and doing all kinds of crazy things. So be safe on that, on that end of it. And then thanks again to my colleagues for the mayor pro temp position for this year coming up. I'm excited to serve in that capacity. So thank you.
Well, congratulations, Councilmember John O'Neal, to be our new mayor pro temp for the next year. Also, what, we, we're going to have another council meeting next week. So just something in the holiday spirit. I was thinking and asking if my colleagues want to join me, having a ugly sweater.
Rat?
Christmas...
No, ugly, ugly.
What we call with cute sweater, cute Christmas sweater, in the, in the holiday spirit, so that we can celebrate. And so is the audience who want to be, who going to be here next, next week joining us, special meetings. We can all wear cutest Christmas holiday sweater. How's that?
You don't think I'm ugly enough without an ugly sweater?
Oh, I love your tie. Santa, Santa in the town right now. Second thing is just, I just want to say happy anniversary to my husband and I. We just celebrated 15 years last week. So just something that, you know, I'm very treasured for. Thank you.
Just shout out and pay attention to upcoming events in the city. I'm sure someone else will make a more extensive report, so I won't go into it, but we have Winter in the Grove coming up on Thursday. We have OC Autism's Breakfast with Santa at Atlantis Park on Saturday. I believe that Chambers also having their holiday mixer this week. So pay attention to our Garden Grove public page on Facebook and other social media outlets to keep in touch with all the events that are happening during the holiday season.
Everyone have said most everything that would need to be said. I just want to add one more of the things with the holiday coming. Please look out for package that being delivered to our doorstep. There are always bad people going, you know, door-to-door and try to grab it from us. I got a couple that just disappear, so.
Couple of quick things. Earlier this evening, we had a wonderful event hosted by our Garden Grove Tourism Promotion Corporation called Tourism Cares. This is the second time that they've done this. Our, is just sort of a backstory, we've been very aggressive in facilitating hotel development in our city for over 20 years now. It's become the kind of economic engine that fuels the city, creating about $26 million a year in hotel tax revenue to our city. Obviously, our hotels being adjacent to Disneyland and its 20-some-odd million annual visitors is a huge boon to our economy, and our hotels are doing very well, and they give back to our community. So this annual event, the second anniversary of this annual event, Tourism Cares, they actually handed out $25,000 checks to five of our local nonprofits, including the Garden Grove Community Foundation, Hope, Boys and Girls Clubs, Garden Grove, United Way, and OC Food Bank, five absolutely wonderful organizations that just have a lot of impact on our kids, our youth, our residents here in Garden Grove, and our tourism industry supporting that. So I just want to give them a shout out. Kim mentioned it, but I'll elaborate on it a little bit. Winter in the Grove coming up Thursday afternoon, evening. This is very fun, because it's actually a culmination of several different events. There was, there was the Winter Fest that used to be held at Atlantis Park. There was the Christmas tree lighting ceremony that was done at Village Green Park. And thirdly, there was an independent group that I'm involved in that did kind of an exotic car show and OC and a toy drive or whatever, right? And those three events are all coming together now. So a lot of different programming, snow for the kids, car show, bunch of fun stuff, please come out. And then obviously, the Christmas tree lighting. And I hear there might even be a visit by Santa Claus himself, if we're lucky. I thought I'll hand it over to Scott.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and just to read, so our, the community services staff has spent a lot of, you know, they were, you know, when it got, last week's event got, the rain kind of knocked them out. They, but everything will be, you know, up and running, and it's supposed to be a beautiful evening. So they're excited to have everybody come out for that. And just one final reminder, I'm told that next Friday is the last day to turn in all you, all of your receipts for the city's end-of-the-year buying Garden Grove campaign. Black Friday Goes Big is how we're promoting it. And again, any of the receipts that you have, just take them into the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce office. of Commerce office on Main Street by Friday, December 20th at 5:00 PM. And then they're going to announce all the winners on December 23rd on the city's and the chambers websites and social media. You can visit GGCity.org backslash beg to learn more all about it. So, good luck to everyone that's participating in that.
Legal counsel, do we have need for a closed session?
No, we don't. We're good.
Don't we? I thought we're still going back in there, aren't we?
Nope.
Okay, well done. Okay.
Yeah, there's no report of action. Not a closed session.
Thank you. Then we shall convene the meeting. Thank you. Or adjourn the meeting? Yeah.
Yeah.